I'd like to call this council meeting to order. Would you please stand for the pledge in a moment of silence? Asylum meditation. Thank you. Angie, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Here.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines. Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hanke. President Dawson.
President. We have a quorum. This is a reminder for everybody in the council chambers, please turn off your cell phones or put them on airplane mode. And when you come to the mic, if we ask you to make sure you speak clearly and give us your name and where you live. I need minutes for approval. I need a motion to approve the minutes of September 9th council meeting, 2024. I have a motion by Mr. Fish, a second from Mrs. Hines, to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Can I get approval for the minutes of September 16th, 2024 council meeting?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion from Mrs. Hines, a second from Mr. Mishler for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations and introductions. There are none. I'm sorry, are there any? John, anything? No, okay. The Finance Committee of the whole met on Saturday, September 21st for the 2025 budget hearing at the Learned Theater. The committee met with all of the department heads and reviewed their budgets and gave a tentative approval for those budgets. Ordinance on second reading. Would you please read proposed ordinance 24-0-38 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-38, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone 1723 Oakland Avenue, Elkhart, Indiana, from R4 multiple-family dwelling district to R2 one-family dwelling district.
I get a motion, a second, to adopt this ordinance. Second by Mr. Hanke, second by Mrs. Hines. Council discussion. Mr. Trotter, I see you moving towards the podium.
Good evening. Eric Trotter, Planning Department. This evening, we have a request that came with a positive recommendation from the Plan Commission to rezone the property, which is currently vacant at the northwest corner of Oakland from R4 to R2, with the end goal of building two new homes on, two new single-family dwellings at that intersection. Staff supports it. The neighborhood is ready for some new infill development. And with the petitioner is in the audience this evening. They can speak to anything else, but we're excited to see this happening.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Fish.
Oh, thanks, Eric. The lot backs up against the former aerial processing area, does it not?
No, it backs up against other property. Duplex to the north.
So off of Wolf, then.
Yes, it's at the northwest corner.
Okay, so there's no encroachment against their property at all. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Mrs. Key.
Yes, I would like to thank the new development coming to the district and...
Which district is that coming to?
Six. How do you say that in Spanish? I want everybody to know. So, thank you, Mr. Peoples, for looking to expand our community with beautiful housing. I'm excited. Congratulations.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Thank you, Eric. Seeing none, I open it up to the public. Is anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this development? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council for council discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none. Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke. President Dawson.
Aye. Can I get a motion for third and final reading? I have a motion from Mrs. Hines, a second from Mr. Mishler for third and final reading. Angie, would you read the ordinance by title, please, and do a roll call vote?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-38, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone 1723 Oakland Avenue, Elkhart, Indiana, from R4 multiple-family dwelling district to R2 one-family dwelling district. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Yes.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines. Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peoples. We appreciate that. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-39 by title?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-39, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to accept a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development grant in the amount of $1,050,000 for lead hazard reduction capacity building grant.
Thank you. Is there a motion, a second, to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Fish, a second by Mr. Crabtree for adoption. Council discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Mary Casca, Assistant Director of Community Development, City of Elkhart. This grant will allow us to focus particularly on homes with vulnerable children under the age of six. So that is the focus of this grant. It's a three-year grant. Our match is 10%, of which some of that is in kind of my salary. So this grant, very little of it is cash match. And this project really technically began August 1, and it'll last over three years. And we'll be building the capacity to provide more contractors who are qualified to mitigate lead in the home, educate parents about the dangers of lead poisoning on children in the home. And then eventually, we'll be able to also move into mitigating lead in the home. So over that three-year period, we are allowed to actually remove lead in homes. And then we can potentially roll this into another grant of significant dollars to continue the mitigation of lead in the home. And again, these are homes with children under the age of six and people that are income-qualified.
Council discussion. Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. I just want to say, as a nurse who works in public health, the importance of lead mitigation and how it can negatively impact cognitive development of children on an early age. With that said, it can also impact those who are older in our community, seniors, and lead to things such as hypertension, heart attack, stroke, and has been linked to some other health issues as well. So anything we can do to help remediate lead in our community, I just want to say I strongly support.
Thank you. Mr. Fish.
Thank you for being here. And I too want to say thank you for the grant. We've got to continue to help the taxpayers here in Elkhart and protect their health. A question about the matching money and the grant money. Where does it sit in the budget? What line item are we going to be working out of? Where do you park the money?
Yeah, about half of that will be some of my time, and the rest of it, I'm not certain where it is. That would be a question for our city controller.
Then I'll ask the controller, unless he's online, maybe.
He's back there.
Oh. Jamie, can you answer that question? And where do we, where do we pull the matching money from?
Good evening, everyone. Jamie, our city city controller for the record. So as Mary indicated, a good portion of this is intended to be from her payroll, which is part of the Economic Development General Fund budget. So that's what's being included as part of her normal salary. We'll go towards that. If there are additional components that need to be utilized for that purpose, then it would come out of that general fund economic development budget. As for the $1,050,000, given that it's a reimbursable loan, this will operate very much like CDBG does out of its own established funds, so there's no commingling. It'll be easier for us to have audit from the State Board of Accounts perspective, and this is a requirement from their direction as well.
Thank you, Jamie. Mr. Hanke.
So Jamie, while you're here, how much of the salary is allowed to be paid from this grant?
Mary might be able to. What was the... It's really a function of how much time.
Yeah, it'll be based on hours and effort. So in, from a, an appropriateness perspective, whenever we're split funding things, the grant rules typically require an hours and effort log. And Mary will be tracking her time put towards the grant to help us identify how much is payroll-related and how much needs to be fill for other purposes. And fill meaning the additional local match component that would be a requirement under the grant.
I'm just looking, and there's probably also professional services in that same, where we can bill out?
Yeah, that could be, that could be an allowable use, but it would also be, I would assume, an allowable use of the grant funds as well.
Right. And then, so then how is that tracked as far as the reduction of the general budget salary ordinance to the refundable amount? And in what timeframe would it be refunded?
So this would be all tracked within the lead abatement grant fund that will be established as part of this. And HUD is typically very responsive when we request a draw. So in looking at CDBG, whenever we're making a request for allowable items to be drawn against, it's usually within a week. That once we make the request, HUD approves it, then we get a direct deposit, and the money is effectively reimbursed back to the city.
Now, have we participated in a lead remediation process through a grant before? Have we had any funds from prior years?
Not, not specific for this program. You may recall that Public Works, as part of the most recent bond issuances, had gotten some money through IFA and the SRF program for lead service line identification. But those are different programs and wouldn't be similar to this.
And the reason I ask, because we had a presentation when Benton Harbor was going through lead funding and remediation. I know that Torrey talked about less than 5% of our houses were affected. And we've then suddenly, we're putting quite a bit of money towards lead remediation, and I'm wondering if our original number was off? Are we looking deeper? How is it that it looks as though what we originally projected isn't quite there?
The difference is this is, this is paint in the home versus lead service lines for water or galvanized, which is typically...
We've had paint in the homes through CDBG, right?
Are allowed to use CDBG funds for that, but because we do get kind of a limited amount of CDBG funds.
But it's been there for 20-plus years.
We normally try not to disturb the paint. But this, right now, in Indiana, every one- and two-year-old child should have their blood level tested. You don't really know unless you can test the blood. And then go and, if the blood is elevated, then you go and assess the home.
Yeah, so I'm looking at lead over lead. So, paint and pipes, lead will both show up in the bloodstream, right? So, with that said, we're tackling two things, that we didn't think we had a problem at one end. Our housing stock by the other end, we've had the capability by funding CDBG to have been looking at this. Do we even know how much we have spent on something of this nature? And is this predominantly for blood testing?
No, these funds are capacity building. These are not for blood testing. This is to raise the awareness that parents need to have the blood tested, get those results, and if the blood level is too high, then move into assessing the home. We work with, we will be working with several other partners in the community, like Beacon Health, Heart City, Maple City Health, all of those to focus on this.
Yeah.
Mr. Mishler.
I'm just saying for the record, I don't expect a lot out of this. We do have some older housing stock. We have a significant housing shortage. And people turning in their property, we have, what, 48% rental property in the city of Elkhart, even more now since we've had other apartments and so on. The greater portion of our properties are becoming rentals. And so, the new ones we get, no lead. But the old ones, for people to recognize it, to be educated on it, and to get them to proactively go get a blood test done. Do we have any, like we would use Elkhart County Health Department to come in with, making it easy, so less barriers? Because otherwise, we can put up a lot of billboards, but have very little participation.
Well, we need to be tracking the data. In St. Joe County, they actually know every year how many babies are born. And so, then they track how many are being tested, so they can tell, are they raising that level of testing? Now, a parent can deny or decline the test.
But this is by birth. They're testing blood at birth? Is that what you're saying?
One and two-year-olds should be tested.
Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. I can speak to some of your concerns, Councilman Hanke, as this is what I, part of my day job with the Indiana Department of Health, Department of Emergency Preparedness specializes in early childhood and lead testing, as well as for pregnant women. Everyone from six months to six years old is tested through our department. And while housing is definitely an issue, including lead paint from older houses, we're also seeing more and more instances of imported goods from China and other nations that are cheaper, but use inferior production facilities that sometimes include lead contamination. And hopefully, as this program continues, we will establish a working relationship with the county and State Department of Health to make sure that, once a lead issue is identified, the proper medical authorities, being that family's primary care provider, the county or state health department can move in to find the source of the lead and everything like that.
Well, and that's exactly right. This is also including creating that system of handling that case. And in fact, just what you described has happened, where a child's blood level was high, they went in, assessed the home, this was through the county, and they couldn't find it in the paint or the woodwork in the varnish. But it was actually in pottery and dinnerware that came from, they brought in from another country. So, once they came in, they assessed the home, wasn't where they thought it would be, but they found it elsewhere.
And another thing that I'll point out as well, if we're talking about long-term cost benefits of lead reduction, there have been significant studies that I can share with the council or the public, if they so would like to see them, linking the removal of leaded gasoline with a reduction in violent crimes and murder rates and things like that as well. That's due to the impact of lead poisoning on the development. And we could, the more lead we remove from developing mines, the better that will help us as a society moving forward.
And children who come into school at five and six years old, who have impulsive issues, could be due to lead poisoning.
Mr. Hines.
I was going to ask, how are we educating the community and how are we connecting them with this service, this program?
Well, there is actually a coalition that's been forming around Beacon Health, really focusing on maternal mortality, women in childbirth. There's a high level of mothers who are passing away and children. So, they're focusing on that health of that group. So, we're kind of tying into that group, who's, they've brought together many of the entities, who also, when we applied for this grant, had written letters of support for this. So, our niche is really kind of in the housing side of it. And I would kind of call it part of a healthy home initiative. And actually, through HUD and our CDBG funds, we are now also required to test for radon in a home. So, that's another part of healthy home situation.
Thank you. Mr. Hanke.
So, I go back to the original, and I'm sorry to belabor this, but, you know, if you're going to spend a million dollars and actually target something that I think everyone agrees could be an issue in any community, really, getting the results you're looking for. So, it would seem that wherever the prenatal care is, would be the beginning point, because post-birth, your lead levels match your mom's lead levels. It is what it is at the most critical time. And to actually fall to normal is about one year. To completely rid the body of, it will start to decrease in every 30 days, of course, just like carbon monoxide, but it still has its effects at its peaks, right? So, that's the part that says, I get, but timing is the critical element. And there's got to be a way to get in front of the whole thing.
And that's right. And mothers, before they deliver their babies, is another targeted group.
So, that would require the health department to go into the community, especially Heart City Health, Minority Health, and all of that stuff specifically to target that piece. Or we would already know that number if we were effectively doing that job.
But this is also keeping track of that data and tracking the trends. And all of those, Minority Health, Heart City Health, they were all supportive of this grant.
So, how is it that South Bend knows their day today, and we're just beginning?
Because they've been at this longer.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this? If not, I'll turn it back to the council. Any more council discussion? Saying none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote on this, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke. President Dawson.
Aye. Third and final.
I have a motion for Mr. Crabtree, second for Mrs. Hines, for third and final. Would you read this ordinance by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-39, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to accept a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development grant in the amount of $1,050,000 for lead hazard reduction capacity building grant. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Ordinance of the resolution referred to committee. Proposed ordinance 24-0-34 will remain table. Proposed orders 24-0-35 will remain table. Proposed ordinance 24-0-36 will remain table. Proposed orders 24-0-37 will remain table, as well as proposed ordinance 24-0-10 will remain table. Would you please read proposed orders 24-0-32 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-32, an ordinance appropriating $850,000 from the Economic Development Income Tax Fund to the revolving loan fund and authorizing the use of said funds as a forgivable loan in connection with the construction of a 48-unit affordable housing project for economic development purposes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to second to adopt this order?
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Mishler. Mr. Huber.
Good evening, council. Mike Huber, Director of Development Services, City of Elkhart. I want to thank you all for your attendance at this special Development Services meeting of the council, since it seems like we're, most of the items on the agenda this evening. So, the project at 515 East Street is a redevelopment of the former wheelchair manufacturing building that will now become a mixed-use building that includes 48 new housing units and approximately 2,000 square feet of commercial space. Represents a total investment of approximately $13.5 million by the developer. Real America, the project developer, applied for low-income housing tax credits for this project each of the last two years to secure the primary funding source for the project. And the city of Elkhart agreed to provide local match investments to assist with project costs, including the demolition of the existing structure as part of that application both years. This year, the project was successfully funded and awarded credits to support the development. Due to the inclusion of the low-income housing tax credits, all of the 48 units included in this project will be affordable, based on incomes ranging from 30% to 80% of the area moderate, area median income. For reference, the current area median income for the city of Elkhart, based on the most recent HUD data, is about $57,000 for an individual and about $82,000 for a family of four. So, that would be 100% of the area, of the median income for the area. Rents for these units will range from $300 to $1,260 a month. Approximately half the units in the project are available for households earning 70% to 80% of the area median income. These units will range from basically $865 to $1,260, depending on the unit size and the number of bedrooms. So, half of them will be available at that rent rate. That's, for reference, there are a number of market-rate, existing market-rate projects in the city of Elkhart that have rents about $900 to $1,200. So, these units are priced similarly to some of our market-rate units, even though they're designated as 70% to 80% AMI units. Along with the Division Street project by La Casa, this is one of the few new housing development projects that we've had in the city of Elkhart that actually provides housing options affordable for households under 60% of the AMI. The city had conducted a housing study in 2022 through Zimmerman Volk. That study indicated that the city will need approximately 400 to 530 additional units for households earning under 80% of the AMI annually over the next five years. So, that's, you know, that's 2,000 to 2,500 units total. And we're getting 48 here, and the Division Street project was 12. So, I mean, that's 60 out of 500 units. So, we still have a pretty long way to go to provide additional housing options for those folks. And that's the most challenging for developers to be able to provide. The forgivable loan agreement that's proposed in this project mirrors the structure of the agreement that was provided to industrial commercial properties for the redevelopment of the Concord Mall. Similar to the Concord Mall, if the project isn't completed, the developer is responsible for the repayment of the loan. The proceeds of the loan will be used to assist with the demolition of the existing structure, which is about half a million dollars, and additional site and utility relocation work. If you're familiar with the site, there is an alley next to the parking structure. There are a number of utility poles and things. So, there's a significant amount of work that has to be done on the site, and that's our proposed investment in the project. We do have Rhonda Shrewsbury, who is the president of Real America here in the audience as well. And I think there might be some folks online from the company as well, so.
Mr. Mishler.
Yeah, just a couple quick questions here for you. How many units, again, was it total?
It's 48 units.
48 units total. So, is that about one and a half? The average is about one and a half parking spots per unit?
So, typically, the downtown requires about, I think the downtown CBD requires one parking space per unit. We also recognize that for the income target of this project, and because of its location in downtown, we expect that there be access to public transportation and walking distance to the grocery store and a number of the amenities, that there will be folks who won't have a car.
Okay. So, how many parking spots are we anticipating?
So, it's already gone through the zoning process and been approved for the appropriate zoning through the zoning process.
Okay. Because I do know that we have the parking garage right there as well, that's utilized currently by both our, you know, police department as well as the Hotel Elkhart.
I believe the project itself accommodates 27 to 29 parking spaces on-site. And then there is the utilization of additional on-street parking as well.
Okay. And you said 30 to 80% of area median income? And for rent, that is between 300 on the lower side and $1,260 on the higher side, correct? Okay. And half of those units would be between 300 and 800, give or take, 700?
Correct.
Okay. And similar loan language as it was for ICP?
Correct.
Okay. Used primarily, sorry if I'm repeating everything, just making sure I got it all, used for demolition and utilities?
Demolition, site prep, and relocation, yes.
And do we have a timeline?
Yeah, so they are intending to close as soon as this is approved. If it's approved, they will close on their financing and begin the demolition of the project, of the existing structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Fish.
So, Mike, that, would you use the same entrance, that Hug Street, they call it, the alley there?
Correct.
Okay. The second one would be a financial question. Upon closing, then our terms begin on the loan?
Upon closing, yes. And then the loan is forgiven when the project is completed. Correct. Well, we would begin, the loan terms would start with their first draw, right? Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Hanke.
I appreciate the financial questions, because really, that's what this is. And the company, now, is this project tied to any other, or is it a project in and of itself, an LLC to itself?
So, this is a project that'll be an LLC unto itself that's developed by the Real America Company, correct?
Okay. And so, 13.5 total investment. What part of the money is actually company investment, non-tax credit, non-grant related?
I can let the developer speak to that.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Rhonda Shrewsbury. I'm the president of Real America Development. Just to give you a little background, 30 years, founded this almost 30 years ago in March. We'll be 30 years old, and we've developed throughout the state of Indiana and now Colorado a little bit affordable housing. To answer your question for the equity piece, we obtain federal tax credits, the Section 42 tax credits, and sell the tax credits, the 10-year tax credit to raise the equity for the equitable portion of our portion of the costs. We are, since we originally submitted this in 2022, with the interest rate changes and construction costs, we do have a deficit. The project's a little over $14 million right now. So, any equitable contributions we make comes from our fees, developer fees that we would defer into the project. But the crux of the equity that goes into the development is through the sale of the tax credits and our equity partner.
So, my original question was, how much money does the company itself extend? And what you're saying is, really, did I hear you correctly? It's really the zero, because you are actually using full tax credit for the total cost of this project plus city money, I suppose.
Yes, and then, and, yes.
Okay. Now, is this LLC also listed as a 501(c)(3)? Is it a tax-paying entity? Or is it a non-tax?
Legacy 25. Legacy 25 is a 501(c)(3). And together with Real America, Legacy 25 is the general partner and the owner of the entity. And Real America is the developer and co-owner with Legacy 25.
Okay, but to be clear, I want to know what...
David, the property will generate tax, will generate property taxes, and it will generate tax increment into the TIP.
Do we have an idea of the level of... Do we have an idea of the level of property tax per year once completed?
I have the pro forma. I didn't memorize the amount. I can certainly send you the tax, the projected tax investment in the pro forma.
Yeah, because otherwise, you know, otherwise, I would preach against the project if there was no income except wheelchair exhaustion.
It does. It generates, and it generates back into the TIP.
Because the only thing that really is going to correct our rent and housing price inequities are supply. Supply over demand drives prices down, obviously, but the opposite of that is, and you know this, you're in the business, I'm not going to act like I'm a great advocate for that type of housing, quite honestly, because it requires taxes from other people to help this project get going. It's also somewhat of an unfair disadvantage for home providers, apartment providers locally, because they don't get a subsidy or tax credit of any kind. So I want to be very, you know, careful about how we try to move the market. In all fairness, it's only 48 units, and so that's a different story. If there were more of these, I'm not a La Casa fan, for example, you know, that's all subsidy on that site as well. I realize we do need it, but it comes on the back of somebody else. And so if they have to pay more money by a rate user or anything else, we actually push up the price of goods and services and housing to everyone else that's not participating in this particular program. I could go with this. I know the property well. It's a good use of that area. Don't like the tracks being so close, but it is, that's Elkhart. But I do think that there's a huge need. It truly is. I just don't want them all to be subsidized. I'd like the market rate to do what it's supposed to do. But I will support your project.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? To your point, David, just, this is one part of the solution, right? We are developing significant numbers of market rate. This is a gap that is not being met. I tried to highlight the definite need that we have and the lack of projects we have in this area. And so, you know, we need to have a balance of all of them, as you indicated.
And if I could, the total amount, including curb cuts, anything, what's the city's investment? What's the city's cost of the project?
The city's investment in this project is $850,000.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Mike, thank you. Thank you. At this time, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to this project? So please come forward. Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Any more council discussion? Seeing none. Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Got a motion for third and final? Got a motion for Mr. Hines, second for Mr. Fish, for third and final? Would you please read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-32, an ordinance appropriating $850,000 from the Economic Development Income Tax Fund to the revolving loan fund and authorizing the use of said funds as a forgivable loan in connection with the construction of a 48-unit affordable housing project for economic development purposes. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Would you read proposed resolution 24-r-47 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 24-r-47, a resolution of the common council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, approving the substantially final form of development and loan agreement, 515 East Street Project.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this resolution? Motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mrs. Hines for adoption. Council discussion. Mr. Huber.
This is just the actual loan agreement that goes along with the previous appropriation.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing, Mr. Hanky.
This is out of edit, I believe, and this is through the Economic Development Loan Program?
You're on the next one. I think you're on the next one, David.
This is a form, this is form of loan agreement for Real America.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you. We'll come back to the next one. Mr. Fish.
So, question on the Section 42 tax credit. How long do those tax credit, how long are they viable?
I believe it's a 15-year period.
A 10-year credit with a compliance.
Sorry.
Oh, we can't, got to have it on the record.
She said it's a 10-year, and then there's a 15-year compliance period.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Huber. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to this public hearing? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Council discussion. Mr. Hanky.
What was the statute of law?
Angie, would you do a roll call vote on this proposed resolution, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Okay. Are we still on the resolution?
Did we do third and final?
Resolution, what's the resolution?
Resolution.
We're on the one that you want to talk about right now, I think. Would you please repropose resolution 24-r-48 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 24-r-48, a resolution of the common council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, authorizing the transfer of $50,000 from the full-time account to the contract services account of the Lerner Theater.
Got a motion in a second to adopt this resolution? Motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mrs. Hines for adoption of this resolution. Mr. Huber. Wait, wait, wait. You want to answer the question? You want to repeat your question, David?
How about I give a little context for the item before we get into the questions? Because I'm not sure I have the answer to his question. That might be actually Jamie's. So, just kind of to start, this item actually originated around the time that the original development agreement for the outdoor music venue in the Central Green fell apart. The city, following that, the city had created a promotional piece summarizing the opportunity for the outdoor music venue development, based on the original RFP that had been issued. And we were initiating contact with other potential developers. I was introduced to Scott Welch, who's in the audience this evening with Welch Management Group, during Idea Week at Notre Dame, as an interested party that might have some interest in the outdoor venue project. Mr. Welch collaborated with a partner, Blake McDaniel of Conway Entertainment Group, to explore the opportunity and try to understand the potential development parameters, including the possible management of the Lerner, as had been contemplated in the original development agreement. Combined, Mr. Welch and Mr. McDaniel have significant number of years of experience in the music industry, both having managed and represented major label artists and booking them in venues across the country. After an initial virtual work session to kind of discuss the potential agreement parameters and expectations, Mr. Welch and Mr. McDaniel visited Elkhart to better understand the market, to see the site, and to understand the development underway in downtown Elkhart. The visit also included a tour of the Lerner and some discussions with the staff. This was the initiation of some conversations about the Lerner's current operating model and Mr. McDaniel's previous experience as a board member of the municipal auditorium in downtown Nashville. And his role on that, Mr. McDaniel, was part of initiating a number of changes that resulted in the Nashville municipal going from an annual public subsidy of $1 million a year to becoming self-sufficient within one- to two-year period. During our conversations around the outdoor music venue, the former GM of the Lerner resigned and left that position open. The city was presented with a proposal by the current team of Mr. McDaniel and Mr. Welch through Conway Entertainment to undertake a national search for a new full-time GM. That proposal was approved by the Lerner Governing Board last month. One of the key tenets of that was understanding, with the pressure of not having a GM in place, not having some existing shows booked, needing to continue to have somebody negotiating to book additional shows, and the celebration of the 100-year anniversary of the Lerner with the committee getting started and planning underway for that. It was really, really incumbent on us to try to find an interim GM as quickly as possible. And Mr. Welch and Mr. McDaniel took that as part of the engagement, in addition to not just finding the permanent GM, but to helping us find an interim GM as well. They actually presented two candidates. The candidate that was selected and recommended to the city and recommended to the Lerner Governing Board is Ms. Sherry May. She is on virtually this evening as well. She has spent the last 24 years creating and managing a pretty significant concert series at the Memphis Botanic Gardens. They do a five-show season, and they have over 7,500 people come to each of those shows, and they have over a $2 million budget just on that series every year, and that might be understating the budget. She was recommended to the Lerner Governing Board last month as an interim GM. The Lerner Governing Board agreed to execute a contract through Conway Entertainment as well to bring Ms. May on as the interim GM. The resolution that's in front of you this evening allows for funds to be transferred from the full-time salary line of what we would have been paying the full-time GM into the contract services line to be able to pay for the contract for the interim GM. It is anticipated that the interim GM will only be in place, serving in that role, until the time it takes to actually hire and secure a new full-time GM in that position. We think that's probably 90 to 180 days, max.
Thank you. Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. So 90 to 120 days, max. If it goes longer than that, is this $50,000 going to be enough, or will there be another request for additional funds?
I can't speak to that fully. I know the intent is that the interim would continue to serve while we're still looking for a new GM.
Okay. And if that new GM was found, let's say it happens two weeks from now, this $50,000, is that gone, or do we recoup a portion?
No, the contract, I think, is a $10,000 a month contract.
$10,000 a month?
As it works now. So we would pay for the next two weeks, and then this $50,000 would not be spent, correct?
Okay. So if it's $10,000 a month, though, this is a five-month contract?
Correct.
Okay. And following that, if we are still looking, hopefully we're not, we would potentially have to do this again?
I would assume that would be the case.
Okay. Thank you.
But I'll let Jamie answer that as well.
Any other questions? Mr. Fish.
So, Mike, this might be Jamie's answer, but who will have the responsibility for the budget going into next year if we continue with this contract service? Who is going to manage the budget portion of it, and who do they answer to?
Yep. So it would be a combination of the mayor, the deputy mayor, or Bradley, Chief of Staff, the interim GM, and the Lerner Governing Board.
Okay. With overall control would be probably Jamie and the mayor.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hanky.
There's a couple of questions that do come up. Since we have had a secondary position, I thought at the Lerner that would step in, could actually do, and if we don't, I'm not sure why we didn't train someone for the days off, you know, the vacations, the honeymoons, and all of that stuff. Why we didn't automatically have someone in place, number one. Number two, I don't know if it has been a discussion that the Lerner should be managed by a third party to begin with, and outside necessarily of city control, just city ownership. Give it to people who do it as their career, as opposed to what we're doing, and we seem to be not able to break our own glass ceiling in the area of the Lerner Theater.
So if I could respond to those two points. One, I can't really speak to the ability of the previous GM to train or not train somebody in that position. I don't...
She had an assistant, but...
Whether she trained that person effectively or not, I can't speak to that, right? What I can say is, to your second point, part of the strength of the interim GM we have and part of the role that she's playing, in addition to kind of helping manage day-to-day, is she's doing that assessment along with Mr. McDaniel and Mr. Welch, who have that experience doing these things in Nashville, and exactly doing that, making recommendations and looking at opportunities for us to improve the organizational structure and the capacity of the organization, to find ways to do things that should be city-done and do things that shouldn't be city-done, and get as close or with the goal of making this a self-sustaining organization, much like what they accomplished in Nashville.
Out of Nashville?
Correct.
Tell Buck at Redneck Saloon I said hi.
David, David, David.
Believe me. So with that said, I would hope that we would all remain open-minded about what's in the best interest of the Lerner, not just from a city perspective, but an ongoing perspective and the investment we have.
We certainly are, especially given the fact that we're celebrating the 100-year. We want to make this, you know, we're trying to make this the best it can be moving forward for the next 100 years.
And David, I actually sat down with these gentlemen, and their goals are the goals that we talk about, self-sustaining and better. I've explained to them what our situation has been since we've opened the Lerner, and they believe we can do better. And I think that's, we all believe we can do better. So I was impressed with sitting down, talking to them, listening to their vision for the Lerner, listening to the things that they've done and they can do at the Lerner. So I tried to express the council's concern with what we were putting into the Lerner and when we needed to get to a point that that's break even, and then to the next step. And they felt like that's something that we can do with the commodity that we have, because they see it as a great asset for our community.
And we're anticipating an initial 30-day report as early as the November Lerner Governing Board meeting.
Good to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Public, open up the public hearing. Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Any other council discussion? Seeing none. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
We have some chatter on the mic.
Passes nine to zero. Can we mute Sherry May, please? Thank you.
You know what that chatter is?
Yeah. They're taking care of it.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on. We have no valley vacations, other new business. Other new business. Mr. Hanky.
Oh, I did, in preparation of this budget, and I hope that we also not only watch the dollars go out, but hopefully we're monitoring the dollars that should, that need to come in in order to satisfy our growing budget. But I did make it out to some departments, and I would hope that we would further scrutinize some unusual spendings, and I can, you know, name a few. And I think that we should have had, or we should allow department heads or the mayor to say no to some of this stuff. But I would suggest to us that the Parks Department has a stand, a food stand that was $30,000 to purchase. And that's one thing. My problem with it is you're competing with all the private vendors that are trying to do the same thing and make a living, and the city is competing with the private sector. It's been wrecked twice, by the way, already, which is an indication that maybe we shouldn't be in that business. But it was $30,000, and it sits, just sitting, you know, it's just going to sit there for a while, kind of like the Tolson bus that I wanted to buy. It rotted, it rotted through. So there's your Tolson bus. That was quite a bus in its day, and it just sat and rotted with very few miles on it. We have a pontoon that fully gave way as well, and it's going to be sent in for scrap. The airport actually has a hot tar machine that even our street department doesn't have one, but the airport does, and it's been in repair more than it's been on at the airport property. And this... And this represents, and it's only a few hundred thousand dollars, but it's a few hundred thousand dollars. So when we're talking about affordable housing and subsidized housing, I mean, we're, we're, some of us were on the council when the wood-burning stove was put in this, in central garage, and it's like, you know, come on already. You know, obviously that didn't last long, but it did represent yet another expenditure that needs further scrutiny. So with that said, there's the two sides, and you know I preach it. There's the two sides of where we are, those in need and those that have to pay for those in need, and there's got to be a happy medium because you can't drive away by taxes and rates, everybody that is on the fringe, because there's plenty, most of our people are on the fringe, paycheck to paycheck or not too far ahead. So I just ask us, as we go into the budget process, to be very aware of how much money flows through our fingers. So that's, that's number one. Number two, I wish that we would have had a little bit of consideration on the timing of the meeting. Six o'clock is difficult, maybe easier for department heads.
David, that's, that's not new business. That's, 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 that passed. That's not new business. That's, that's done.
It's new business on how it affects us.
Well, it's not, it's not new business.
Well, in your determination, but I have difficulty-
All right, is there anyone else that has any new business?
And as usual, trying to shut me down by having an early meeting, so I can't attend the whole-
Seeing none.
I get your point.
Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. I'll just be brief. I want to, once again, commend our Parks Department and our Parks Superintendent Jameson Zarnaghi. We recently had the ribbon-cutting of the Island Park Disc Golf Course, which I'm hearing fantastic reviews from just about everyone who's over there. Disc Golf was one of the most requested amenities to add to our parks, and he took a unique perspective on how to fund that, utilizing outside support, and managed to, to get it done and do a great job in the process. We're also continuing to see development of the new playground at Walker Park and the restrooms that come out there as well. So I'm looking for, forward to seeing that finished. He's doing a great job. And our, and on top of that, Buildings and Grounds has done a fantastic job as we head into the fall season as well, so I just want to commend them as well.
Thank you. Any other new business? Seeing none. Moving on to reports, the mayor, Board of Works, Board of Safety, department heads. Seeing none. Neighborhood associations, reports.
Yes.
I was trying to see if somebody was going to beat you to it, but okay, 5th, 5th district.
I gave him a chance.
I saw you did.
But the Pomeran Neighborhood Association, we met yesterday at the Pomeran Park Pavilion. You know, we have our meetings outside three to four months every year, and now it's time to move back inside, and we discussed the issues of our neighborhood, keeping our neighborhood clean. The aftermath of the tornado, how people are coming with rebuilding their homes was discussed, and also we were saddened to hear that one of our best neighbors is moving out. Tracy DeGraffrey and his family are moving out of our neighborhood, and they'll be renting that house. So if you want to move into a great neighborhood association area, you could rent that house if you're looking to rent. And we're looking at some of the new neighbors that have bought in our area, and some of the construction, new construction going on in our area. So we just discussed those things, but also we were happy that Adrian Riley was at our meeting, and, you know, we went over things about the police department, some questions were asked, and also while I'm doing that, we'd just like to thank our police chief for giving us this update on the attrition of the police department. So our neighborhood association, we love getting together and talking about the issues and knowing our neighbors better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other neighborhood associations? Put your hand up, Miss K.
Yes. Was our budget meeting the 23rd? Our budget meeting.
23rd, yes.
23rd. What's his name?
Ramley. Greg Porter, clean up.
Yes, he had one. The Elkhart Truth was out there, so if you get a chance, look at that paper, it was in that, that week or that following week, and he had volunteers to come out. But I also want to announce that we'll be, we will be having all the neighborhood association end-of-the-year meeting, and then I will reach out to everyone, and Patty will be helping with that, Marina, and getting everybody together and planning for 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Privilege of the floor, is anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything that comes before the Elkhart City Council that wasn't on the agenda? Seeing none, now closes the public hearing. It's scheduled to have committee meetings on October 17th at 6 o'clock. We'll pass, be here to pass the final budget and have a public hearing for those budgets. I will be looking for, we spent seven hours on the 23rd on the budget, so what I will be looking for is amendments to the budget, if there are going to be any, you know, so we can have that discussion. The department heads responded very well to the questions that were asked during the budget hearings, so make sure you check your email to see what those are, and if you have any more questions for them, make sure you do get those answers. But what, what we're looking for at the public hearing and the final adoption, we need to go through the salary ordinances as well, and we also need to approve the budget, which the salary ordinances include. So we'll be meeting at 6 o'clock to get those things done, so if you have any amendments, you want to send them to people ahead of time, that'd be great as well. So yes, and I thought we did a good job. I want to commend the department heads for your professionalism at the budget hearings. I mean, keeping us up to date and, and your future ideas of things you'd like to be doing. We were impressed by that. I liked that process. I think doing it on that one day gave us that opportunity to hear you all, and then gave us a couple of weeks to actually, before and after, to get some questions answered. So October 17th, 6 o'clock, Elkhart City Council chambers, finance committee, special council meeting, not finance committee, special council meeting, to finalize the budget and the salary ordinances. Okay. Acceptance of communications. Got a motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mr. Fish to accept communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Got a motion by Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Crabtree to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.